...of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the middle of all with liberty and justice for all.
It's not border, law of the prison. Item four.
Democrat does that.
I didn't look at them.
Motion to approve item number four.
Here's a correction. Motion by one, second by one.
Do they need to be corrected? Why weren't they corrected before we got here?
That's what we do.
You should have been, you made the motion, Mike makes the second.
We're going to amend the minutes to give any corrections?
Yes. The motion to ratify or approve the seminar request, it was made by me and seconded by you.
Approve, woman, correct whatever we have to do to correct them, approve the minutes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? All fair and?
Aye.
Item five.
Motion to approve item number five is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecco, second by Commissioner Warren, approve item five on the agenda, ratify and prove the cashes first from electronic transfers. Questions or comments?
What are the federal payroll taxes?
You gotta speak up, I can't hear you.
What's that?
You gotta speak up.
What are the federal payroll taxes?
Federal payroll taxes, exactly what it means.
I mean, who gets that?
It goes to federal government, they're federal payroll taxes. So it's taken out of your paycheck for federal taxes. All fair and?
I make a motion to approve item number six, it's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Grecco, to approve item six, ratify and prove following seminar request and payment for seminar request. Questions or comments? Yes.
I'd like more explanation about the first course cost for Paul Johnson and Robert Thatcher. And it says nuclear shipment truck and type B container demonstration. Do you have any more explanation about that?
I don't have it on those, but I'm sure it deals with nuclear waste and nuclear material that's transported on the highways and dealing with incidents of those natures.
So do we have any of that coming through our county?
Well, of course, we have eighty-one in our county.
So, so any kind of nuclear waste, and what's type B, I wonder?
Type B, I'd have to find out. Type B, I'm not sure on that.
Okay, thanks.
All fair and?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number seven, it's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Grecco, to approve item seven on the agenda, accept the regret to resignation of Carissa Changlin from the sheriff's office. Questions or comments? Yes.
And how long was she with us?
I couldn't tell you, about six years, ten years.
Oh, several years?
Yeah, several years. All fair and?
Aye. Motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item eight on the agenda, to ratify the transfer of Celine Herman from the patonyary to the secretary and real estate clerk in the sheriff's office. Questions or comments?
Does that mean she's in the sheriff's office now, or in the patonyary's office?
I mean, she's in the sheriff's office.
Okay, so they're moving her. Okay, because I always see her in the patonyary.
Well, that's why it says that she's taken that job. All fair and?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number nine, it's listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Grecco, to approve item nine on the agenda, accept the regret to resignation of Cole Lomond from children and youth. Questions or comments? All fair and?
Aye. A motion to approve item number ten is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item ten on the agenda, to accept the resignation of Alex Anderson from the jail. Questions or comments?
Can you explain what that means when it says jail? What's the position of jail?
Seal.
Corrections officer.
Yes.
Shouldn't you put that in there?
No. All fair and?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number eleven, it's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Grecco, to approve item eleven on the agenda, to approve the transfer of Molly Edwards, Suscano, from a human resources clerk to the full-time salary position of the human resources administrative coordinator. Questions or comments? All fair and?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number twelve is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item twelve on the agenda, to ratify the transfer of Gregory Bazar of Brooklyn from the part-time correctional officer to the full-time corrections officer. Questions or comments? All fair and?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number thirteen, it's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Grecco, to approve item thirteen on the agenda, to ratify the transfer of Jeanette Smith of Montrose from the correctional officer to the full-time position kitchen steward correctional officer. Questions or comments? Yes.
What does that mean? Does that mean kitchen steward and correctional officer, is that two different positions?
It's a position that has both titles to it. It's a correctional officer that works in the kitchen.
And she does correctional officer too?
Well, that's part of the job in the kitchen, is corrections officer in the kitchen.
Oh.
All fair and?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number fourteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item fourteen on the agenda, the transfer of Matthew Ashi from Brockney to the, from maintenance to the open part-time position corrections officer. Questions or comments? All fair and?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number twelve, it's listed on your agenda.
Number which one?
Fifteen, sorry.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Grecco, to approve item fifteen on the agenda, approve the hiring of Patricia Peckett of Montrose to the open union position assistant at real estate tax clerk. Questions or comments? All fair and?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number sixteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item sixteen on the agenda, the hiring of Patricia Leach of Montrose to the full-time union position of field appraiser. Questions or comments?
What does a field appraiser do?
That's a person that goes around and checks the homes and works to create the value for the assessment and for the taxes.
May I make another, ask another question?
Yes.
There were, in the last couple of minutes, there were ten either transfers, resignations, and new hirings. Is this like the time of the year? I mean, it's an awful lot in one shot.
No, what happens is, you know, when a couple people either retire or leave, then what happens, it becomes a bidding for employees because they're union positions, so they, and non-union positions, so they can bump around, so a person may move from one department to fill that one, then another person moves from another department to fill that one. So that continues until everybody's moved, and then we have an open position that we go to the public for.
Okay, thank you.
And then, do you know how many field appraisers do we have at this point?
That will be, there will be three field appraisers.
Is that more than usual, or?
It's the same.
The same?
Yeah, it was an open position. All fair and?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number seventeen, it's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Grecco, to approve item seventeen on the agenda, sign the purchase service agreement between Suscano County Services, Children and Youth, and Preventive Aftercare for children July 1st, 2014 through 2015. Questions or comments?
And how many children are being involved which prevent any aftercare?
Right, currently, right now, there isn't any in there.
One of these.
All fair and?
Aye. A motion to approve item number eighteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item making on the agenda, to sign the purchase service agreement between Suscano County Services for Children and Youth and Preventive Aftercare for July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, June 16th. Questions or comments?
Where is Harbor Creek? Who are they? Where are they out of?
Harbor Creek.
Are we on nineteen? No.
No.
I'm sorry.
No, on eighteen. All fair and?
Aye.
On nineteen.
Make a motion to approve item number nineteen, it's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Grecco, to approve item nineteen on the agenda, purchase services agreement between Suscano County Services for Children and Youth and Harbor Creek Youth Services. Questions or comments? Any questions? Where are they located? And I couldn't tell you exactly where they're located. Harbor Creek has got one youth that's been placed there for 239 days.
And now, are they taking children that are delinquents, or they're somehow, what's the word for it, their parents can't take care of them?
No, this is, this, Harbor Creek is ones that take ones that have severely handicapped children.
Mentally handicapped?
Yes. And it goes through our juvenile probation and children and youth. And it's located in Harbor Creek, PA with a one-six zip, so that's probably over, probably two-thirds across the state, closer to Pittsburgh in here. All fair and?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number twenty, it's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Grecco, to approve item twenty on the agenda, purchase service agreements between Suscano County Services Children and Youth and Children's Service Center of Wyoming-Graley-Wilkes-Barre. Questions or comments?
How many children in that one?
Right now, we have three, three children for 286 days still.
That means per child goes into treatment in some days?
Yeah.
And what's their handicap or situation, do you, and what is their classification?
It's based on psychiatric evaluations. All fair and?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number twenty-one, it's listed on your agenda.
Are we sure those dates?
Yes.
It's two years behind, instead of the normal one. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Grecco, to approve item twenty-one on the agenda, to sign the purchase services agreement between Suscano County Services Children and Youth and PA Treatment Healing for the terms as stated. Questions or comments?
Same thing on this one. Where is it located? How many children? What's the classification?
They, this one is, is in South Montrose. One of them is, and another one is located in the Scranton area. Right now, we have, in two in foster care, and for 172 days, and one inpatient for two days, and we have four that are 280 days, and that's for an day treatment program.
And is this also, what is it considered, psychiatric also, or?
No, this one is juvenile probation and children and youth placement. So kids that have any specific needs. All fair and?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number twenty-two, it's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Grecco, to approve item twenty-two on the agenda, to sign the purchase services agreement between Suscano County Services Children and Youth and PA Healing, and this is for the term of July 1, 2014 through 2015. Questions or comments?
Do you have any costs at this point that you put together? How much is the cost in the county to take care of all these children per month or per year for all these various programs?
It's less, on this one, it's less than $2,000.
On this one, but you have several programs?
Right, they all vary. Minimum, 80% of the cost is reimbursed directly from the state. So our cost is minimal.
And then, do you have any statistics whether this is, how many children this year as opposed to previous years? Do we have more?
No, but you're more than welcome to check with the children and youth director. Michelle Graziano. All fair and?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number twenty-three, it's listed on your agenda.
You say twenty-three?
Yep.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Grecco, to sign the purchase of service agreement between Suscano County Services Children and Youth and Concerned out of Fleetwood, PA for a term of July 2013 through 2014. Questions or comments?
And how many children in that program?
No, that one right now has six children that run there, 846 days.
Eight hundred and forty-six days?
Yep.
That's per child?
No, total.
Total, of all the children? And you have a classification for that one?
No, these are, it's used by juvenile probation, and they're kids with special needs that meet, that don't meet traditional foster home guidelines. All fair and?
Aye.
Twenty-four.
Motion to approve item number twenty-four is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item twenty-four on the agenda, to award the front column repair to the lowest qualified bidder, Jim Dislock from contracting, Carbondale, PA. Questions or comments? Yes.
One could assume that the, our engineers interviewed them, saw work that they did.
Yeah, they went through all the documentation with them and made sure they were qualified.
Okay.
And there'll be performance bonds on it and everything else.
The start date?
Start date is supposed to be, I think it's within six to eight weeks, and it's supposed to be completed before the end of October.
You gonna close off front entrance again?
No, actually, they're gonna take and create a, kind of a shelter so people can get in out of it without closing it down. All fair and?
Aye.
Item twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-five, it's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Grecco, to approve item twenty-five on the agenda, to allocate $750,000 from Act 13 to fund to support the waterline project to the Suscano County Correctional Facility in South Montrose, pending support from the state and other entities for the balance of the $1.8 million project. In the event that the project does not come to fruition, the funds will be reallocated to Act 13. Questions or comments? Yes.
Yes, I'd like an explanation of what's involved with the water project. Is it piping coming out from Montrose Lake to this property? Or is there a new water well?
No, it's not a new water well. Actually, the water, public water line runs to the Riztech location now. It'll be extending the water line from Riztech all the way down to South Montrose to the old Bendix site.
And how many miles is that? Is it a mile or so, or?
Well, maybe a mile, I couldn't give you the exact number.
It's more than a mile, under two, you think?
I have no idea.
So the whole project is costing how much? 1.8 million?
Approximately 1.8.
For about two miles of what, water line?
Well, you say two miles, I didn't, I didn't say how many miles it was.
Okay, so let's say it's over a mile.
Well, I'm guessing how many miles it is.
Okay, something that's within two miles or less. It's costing 1.8 million total for this project? Is that the total price?
The price for this project is approximately $1.8 million.
And this is just the water line coming through? And then what else are they doing? Are they just putting a water line? What else are they doing?
Well, at the same time, they're looking to put the natural gas service down through it too.
So why is that not included in here in describing it? Why don't you say?
This is how cost us to pick the, the gas line, the gas company puts that in.
So it's not costing you anything for the gas line?
Yeah.
But just for the water line? So I'm also, and you're using Act 13 money for this?
Right.
And that's allowable, according to the definition of Act 13?
Yep, absolutely.
I also want to request a $2 million project for the water line to be extended from South Montrose Correctional Facility to Dimick, where we have about two dozen families that need water since gas drilling has contaminated them. And this is DEP verified, they're under consent order since 2010, I'm requesting, and that costs $2 million. A few years ago, they estimated to get water all the way from Montrose Lake to Dimick to supply these families with water. So if this is gonna cost almost $2 million, I'm asking for another $2 million as a citizen to please consider all these families who are suffering since 2008, having to deal with contaminated water, and they have to have replacement water.
Any other questions or comments?
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
So the plan is, when they're putting the pipeline, the water line in, simultaneously to lay the gas?
Right, they're gonna try to work together, and as they get, and get approval, to try and run both lines at the same time so we don't have to dig things up twice.
Thank you.
Is that water coming from Lake Montrose?
Well, that's where all the water comes from that feeds Montrose, is Lake Montrose.
But, a little risky, I mean.
You think the lake will go dry? I don't think the lake will go dry, I think it'll be fine.
You sure?
Yeah.
I had a couple of years ago, I've only had that.
Never known of a problem with that lake yet. Any other questions? Yes. All fair and?
I'd like to know why the project is needed to begin with for the correctional facility.
Because our, we were down to one well at the correctional facility, one well is not operational, and on a dry summer, we will run out of water, and also the storage tank at the jail needs to be replaced. All fair and?
Aye.
Item twenty-six.
Motion to approve item number twenty-six is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item twenty-six on the agenda, to approve the 911 telephone access plan and constitution rate for the residents of Suscano County. Questions or comments?
Can you explain in English what does that mean? In simpler English, like, what does that mean, 911?
Well, basically, it says the rate is, I think it's the same rate as last year, isn't it? $1.50 per month for the 911.
Is it going up, or is it continuing?
It's the same, continuing at the same rate. And of course, that's a program that in the state is pretty much belly up because they're already using next year's funding to pay for this year's costs.
If they run out, does Act 13 kick in here in any place?
Well, we do use Act 13 funding for projects in the 911. Like currently, you know, we know that we have a huge problem with the 911 center as far as being outdated, and we are looking at the possibility of doing something to create a new facility and upgrade, which would be, we'd have to use Act 13 funding to leverage a good portion of it and try to get the rest of the funding from the state and federal government. But, yeah, the problem is, is, and I don't know how they do it, only government can figure out how to do this, they run out of 911 money usually early in the year because there's not enough revenue in the 911 in Harrisburg to pay for all the costs, so then they start borrowing against next year's money to pay for this year's stuff.
Is this county or state?
It's statewide, the 911 funding goes to the state.
Right.
And then we support it, and we get the funding back from the state. All fair and?
Aye.
Sorry, do you have a question?
Public comment.
Public comment. Okay, Alan, you had your end up first, go ahead.
Well, I would like to ask the commissioner to send a letter to both US senators on this victory rule that passed the House, the proposal, Army Corps of Engineers, what they suggested. And three or four years ago, it went to, ended up in Supreme Court, and they turned it down, but now they're trying to do the same thing. And this affects everybody in the county that owns an acre or more ground. Because if you could have a water puddle on an acre of ground, then they could tell you what to do.
But they're already starting to work on passing legislation to prohibit them from enforcing, is that correct?
What they?
They're already working on, is my understanding.
Yes.
Does the Farm Bureau have language that they have developed that they want us to use, because they oftentimes do?
Well, I had a thing last week, and I was coming in to see one of you, commissioner, I misplaced a thing.
Well, fine, you call somebody and get us one, okay?
Well, I left you a one sitting in the Farm Bureau, like, news letter today.
Yeah, I read that, but I also know you guys have language you like to see used.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure we say the right thing.
But I talked to Casey's office and the Republican two days ago, and.
What did you talk?
Well, they were interested in opposing both offices.
Whose office you talked to?
Senator Casey and the Republican, I can't think of either.
Tell me.
Tell me, yeah.
Okay, you get us something, we'll do it.
Well, I left that one paper to them.
Okay, we'll look at it. We have something.
Well, Alan's got a copy of it?
Yeah, I got a copy.
There you are. I showed it to you.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I'd like to know also where the funds are coming from that you said you're expecting for the $1.8 million water project for the jail, from the state. What department from the state? What kind of a fund? What kind of a grant?
Well, there's other, there's other entities besides just the state. It's the state through their capital budget, as well as their economic development budget. There's also private entities that, that are interested in helping to support the line also.
And what private entities would they be?
At this point in time, until I can give them to guarantee, I'm not gonna mention their names.
May I make a comment or ask a question?
Sure.
What's the policy on use of the courtroom?
That's her.
What's the policy on use of the courtroom?
Yes. For events in the evening.
Well, it's not available, I mean, it's a courtroom. You know, there's security issues, and it's a place for the judge, and it's the judge's area.
Okay, there was a time when the league would, the League of Women Voters would have them meet the candidate.
Mm-hmm.
That is no longer an option.
As far as I know, it's not, no.
I don't think it is.
I don't think it is.
And the issue is security? We added?
It's a courtroom.
You yourself have been seated in that courtroom for meeting candidates?
Absolutely, and times change.
Is there an official policy statement with respect to that?
No, there's no official policy statement. It's a courtroom, and it's not to be used for anything but courtroom.
No public use in the evening?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, Chris.
Piggybacking on previous comment or question, the housing, where the development right on Church Ave right over here where the Republican Party meets is HUD housing, and they allowed the Republican Party to meet in there and have meetings, and have their committee meetings. Perhaps the Democrats will get to that since we won't pay for it now.
Absolutely. You ready?
I don't know the name of it, but you all know where it is. Right now, I'm just supporting the least furniture there.
I wanted to just add also to what Julian mentioned. We also had recently, the past six months, I believe, a meeting in the courtroom, which was the planning commission met. If you remember that, we had a whole group meet for that monthly meeting. So that was allowed, so why is it not allowed any longer since just a few months ago?
It's a county agency.
It's a county agency, and now that the room downstairs is back over there, it won't be used anymore.
Okay, then another question would be, any updates on the roads? How is 167 South being repaired according to what you know? Is it almost done, or what's been done so far? And any of the other roads, any updates?
Any updates I can give you at this point is Farm Bureau, with a collaborative group of the Farm Bureau and township supervisors and the commissioners, held a meeting at the end of May, invited Pendot legislators and the governor's office in Pendot out of Harrisburg to a meeting and discuss all the road issues in Suscano County. Unfortunately, nobody from Pendot showed up at the meeting.
Did they give a reason?
Yeah, they just couldn't get it in their schedule. So at that meeting, we were fortunate to have a couple of the assistants from two of the Legislature's office, and they were gonna work on trying to get something set up. In the meantime, Monday, I had a meeting at the Northern Interior Region Transportation Meeting in Tuwanda, which encompasses all the Commissioners in Northern Tier, as well as PNDOT 3, PNDOT 4, and PNDOT out of Central. I did go to that meeting prepared. I took about 30 pictures of what's going on in Suscano County and displayed them on the, on the board for everybody to see, especially Central Harrisburg, as to the horrible road conditions in Suscano County. They were all quite shocked as to the conditions and the quality of work that's getting done, from bridges that were a year old falling apart, to potholes in front of the state shed that can't even get filled in front of a state shed, to all the new cross pipes getting put in on 706 and 167, that all the mud and everything's already going into them and filling them up. PNDOT Central out of Harrisburg has guaranteed us that we will have a meeting, and people from PNDOT Central will be at that meeting, and they will have people there that can make decisions and have authority to do things. So that's the next step.
And what legislator, legislative aides were there? Which, from which legislators?
It was Sandy Major's office and Lisa Baker's office.
And do you have any reason why the work is being done so shoddy, such shoddy work in our county that we're having problems with?
Well, what I can tell you is, for every job that gets done, there are specs and designs that you have to follow. So if they're following the specs and designs, then that would tell me that the specs and designs are fraud, are flawed, and there's a problem with those. If they're not following it, then that would be the question of why the PNDOT inspector on the job isn't catching it and making sure it's being done right. I will tell you that the bridges, that there's an issue on. My understanding from the contractors is the concrete specs have been changed three times in the last four years for the bridges.
Which means what, downgraded?
Well, I don't know. They just changed the specs. So what they, apparently, it will be either cheaper, or better, or both. But the end result being is the one on 7A by the American Legion in Austin they did a year ago, the deck is already, chunks of concrete's already coming off the deck. The one in New Milford by Mary Ann's house, they don't even have that one finished yet, and the lane that we drove on over the winter time is already worn to the point that the cobbles are coming out of the concrete. So they're gonna come up and review all this stuff and see what they can do.
Some more good news on that topic. We were at the Forest Lake Township Meeting, first Monday, whatever it was, and northeast PA, our section has some of the oldest bridges PA, so we're getting, we're gonna get a little attention. There's one, one of those little bridges, and I guess it's a little bit north of Burgeville towards Lawton, which is gonna be starting on July 2nd. The detour for cars is 17 miles, the detour for trucks is 28 miles, and there's a whole bunch of those little bridges that are gonna get done eventually.
Well, and hopefully, they do, because the one bridge in Clifford that was supposed to be getting done this year, apparently, has already been pulled back off, just like 92 from Lenox up to Bowton's service area was supposed to get repaid. They've pulled that off because they don't have enough funding for that now because of the cost for 167.
Maybe they should take the money from the water pipe.
Yes, Alton.
Well, there's a couple bridges on that section, they just withdrew the money too for pressure, for the camera line.
Yep.
They're gonna fix that now.
Right. Yes.
Also, I noticed that PNDOT is using Stefurski. Are they using that company to help pave the roads and repair the roads?
They, they contract out a lot of the different projects they do, like they contracted out 167, they contracted out 706, so.
And is it Stefurski? Because I see that.
Well, that's one of the contractors they're using, but they also use Popple, and they also use, of course, Lee words doing the mess in town that they're working on. And the other one is PNC Supply is now one they're using.
So is there a problem with any of these companies, that they're maybe doing like some inferior work or cheaper type of materials?
No, I think it's, I think what it comes down to is basically the specs for the job, what's being spec, and they're not being spec the way they should be.
And how does 167 South look to you at this point?
Well, it looks a lot better than it did six months ago. It's improving. My understanding, the file will be two inches of blacktop over all the base that's been repaired, and then those stone and chip it on top of that.
And then I was wondering too, there's a large billboard on South Montrose, where on the Guy Parish property, and it says rip-offs, royalty rip-offs. So there's lawyers who are advertising in our county for the, you know, royalty rip-offs. So do you have any updates on the royalty issues in our county and how things are doing for any of the residents?